I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Ostrick, Wolfson, Milburn, Censer, here. Approval of the agenda. In the resolution that we have, I would like to have the word significant removed from the fifth whereas, just because that word is very ambiguous.
I apologize, where is that at?
The fifth whereas.
Are you just going to remove the word significant? So it's going to be that and engineering review?
Yes. Yep. Discussion. Roll call please.
Russo.
Yes.
Ostrick.
Yes.
Censer.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Public comment, is there any public comment? Hope my delegated authority update. Thank you.
Alright, so what I handed out to you guys is a comp of the original cost for the Houghton Lake lake level, which was 1.275 million. And I just wanted you guys to have eyes on that as I go through what the increase in cost to the SAD would be given to do a flood study before altering or doing anything on the lake level. So after that, after the initial page, just so you can look at that, I have a breakdown of all the costs, all the bills to the SAD that are accounted for and currently, and this is a round number because things are always changing, but currently there's about $612,000 in the SAD fund still. On the last page, I have a breakdown of what costs will be incurred going forward. We have a contract with Prenton who offered $152,000 for the design of a new structure. We have Eagle inspection and reporting, which is 4,000, that's straight from the comp of cost. We have lake level mining, which is Hi-Fi, that's, and all these are for three years, the next three years. We have financing charges, which have not been, I don't believe they've been pulled from the funds yet. We have, what you guys wanted was you asked for a flood study done before any alterations. 180,000 is the flood study and beyond, behind this page is the proposal for the study and I'll go over that with you. Next is, and that's for the temporary banking of water, that's what Stacy talked about, that's, you get it done this winter and so that you have something saying, hey, we're not going to flood people come in the spring to do temporary banking. The 110 below that is for the lake level study to go with the new structure and management plan. So that's like you're, you're down the line three years from now. The 180 is just for the temporary banking of water this next year. Fagie Schultz would be, those are an estimated on lawyer fees going forward, 50,000. I have my costs over the next three years at 150,000 and then I threw in a margin of error, me missing stuff, things being wrong of an extra 100,000 over the next three years of unforeseen things. This would create over the next three years deficit of $173,000 in the SAD fund. It's not more because we were able to save costs on the interim project only being 20% of the original amount we thought it would be. So we saved costs there and we're also pulling money from the contingency to make those costs a little lower so it's not higher on the back end. You guys have any questions as of now?
I have some questions. What is the flood study going to entail?
So, yeah, right on the next page. Yeah, I just wanted to give you guys the numbers. Pay, last two pages, I just want, yep.
This one?
I wanted to give you guys the numbers so that you could have that in the back of your head when I go through what you're getting for $180,000.
Okay, what are they going to do, are they going to say, hey, we recommend one inch increase or 10 inch increase? You know, what kind of things are they going to?
What they're going to do is they're going to evaluate the system hydrology of the whole lake and the watershed there. And the study is going to give you a two-year rain event, a two-year rain event for 24 hours, a five-year rain event for 24 hours, a 10-year rain event for 24 hours, 25-year rain event for 24 hours and a 100-year event over 24 hours. So it's going to break it down saying, these are the safe levels at that rain event.
Of course, that depends on what time of year and where you start. I mean, if you're starting like right now with the levels way.
So like a 100, 100-year rain event is a 1% chance of happening.
But I mean during what time of year, that's what I'm saying, depending on what, where the level starts.
Correct.
In other words, right now, we're at the winter level.
Correct, we're at the winter level. But, yeah, no, but it would, in my mind, it would be done off what you're bank, it'd be done off legal level because the only time you're going to be banking is when you need in the summer.
Okay, that leads me, that leads me to another question. I've been hearing for years that there's nowhere for the water to go. There's nowhere for the water to go when that dam is fully open. Is that true and with a new structure? Would we be, would we be able to control the levels better?
So that's part of their hydrology model, which if you look in here, there's 80,000 in just doing the hydraulic analysis and modeling of both the structure and the lake. So that will, that will tell you for sure, they'll say, you can only get rid of this much water and so on and so forth.
Because what I'm concerned about is in the spring and we see these 12 inches over, 14 inches over and it's flooding people out and it, it's terrible for the ecology of the lake. So if we can get the, if we can have the structure, so it will allow enough to be dumped out.
That would be for the final design. What you're talking about is for the final design, this is, can the current structure, what can the current structure do?
Well, the current structure is junk, we all know that.
Well, it's, well, we got it, we have three years where, where attempt, where you guys, I think, wanted to bank water. So over that three years, we.
We never wanted to bank water.
Okay, so.
I don't know who wanted to bank, what said anything about banking water.
Isn't that what Stacy talked about?
In our last meeting, that's what, yeah.
In the future, but I'm not, I'm talking about the past.
Okay, well, I'm talking about the future.
Okay, okay, that's two different, okay, two.
Yep. What they will also take into account with these rain events is they're also going to take into pack, taking into account the winds. Because we know that there's a siege event on the lake and it happens pretty regularly. So not only are you going to do a flood event, but they're going to do a flood event with a wind event to make sure that all bases are covered.
Right, and fortunately this last week and Mr. Cotterman will be able to start getting these numbers too also, I believe, on, on the Hi-Fi on, on Houghton, Higgins and Lake St. Helens. How accurate and how, how good are those measurements? Because I also heard from another one of our board members that we don't know how accurate they are, is that true or? Are we waiting to see what's going on with?
Or?
Well, I'm thinking about Higgins, so that relates to Houghton also because they have Hi-Fi on Houghton.
Yeah, so what do you mean by how accurate?
Compared to the USGS, Darlene the other day sent me an email saying, hey, we, we need to hold off on quoting the measurements.
And you said that on Higgins Lake.
On Higgins, correct.
Yeah, because on Higgins, it's low enough to where the gauges aren't reading correctly.
But there is one gauge that is reading.
Correct.
Is that accurate?
It should be, I don't know their accuracy tolerance, you know.
I mean, if it's within.
I'm assuming it's within about a half an inch. Yeah, if not tighter than that.
And I know we're going to have the other four. The water is so low, for everybody that doesn't know, the water is so low on Higgins.
We're on Houghton, we're on Houghton Lake.
Okay, so, talking about all the Hi-Fi.
That, back, back to the beginning of their proposal, what they plan on doing is they plan on looking at LiDAR of the whole lake and that will, that gives them a broad, cheap way of figuring out where are the worst areas, where are the low areas. And they're going to go in by foot with GPS units and start surveying those low areas and GPS will get you, they use a tower tolerance of .13 feet, but usually within like, that's like an inch and a quarter or an inch and a half. But with GPS, if you don't have leaves in the trees and stuff like that, you can get like a half inch. And then the really bad spots will come in with an actual survey crew, which will be within a couple hundreds tolerance of a foot, so sixteenth of an inch.
Is that, is that like on the top of the dirt on the?
Well, what they, what they'll do is they're going to do seawalls and then they're going to do all structures, doorway entrances.
Okay, so not the earth.
No, no, they're going to hit structures. So it's going to make sure that they know where all the structures, because you know, you might have a seawall up here, but then you have a doorway down here and that they're going to take into account all of it. It breaks it down pretty good on what they're going to do and what you're getting for your, for your, your price. I guess so they're, what they will do though is they're going to give you guys numbers and you guys will have to make a decision on what kind of rain event you want to hold the lake to, if that makes sense.
Can you tell me, in this study, well, we know the difference between areas that have a stormwater issue for flooding and?
The model will show that because it's just going to.
Because there are areas that they flood just because of stormwater, not because of lake level.
The model will take that into account and just be based off the lake. I doubt they're going to, there'll be some surface runoff, but it doesn't take into account the storm drains and how they react in the local areas. They would have to do.
Yeah, we don't have storm drains county sponsored, so. But we do realize there are areas that they flood because of stormwater, not because of the lake level.
I think this will help show what those areas are.
Okay.
I think this is something that we absolutely has to be done, I mean, we promised that.
I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of the price as far as the field work. $100,000 for doing the whole lake is not a bad price. The, the modeling is a little pricey in my opinion, but the fact that it needs to be done by March is probably why it's a little, a little more than what I would expect.
When you get time, would you check with someone and see how we put this extra money on the assessment? Whether we have to have a public hearing on it or if we can just assess it to the district or the procedure to get that assessed?
I guess, Jody, do you know the answer to that?
We've got to go through the whole process.
Oh, we can't just, it just wouldn't fall under contingency or nothing?
Each project, each project has to go through the process.
So then, can it be initiated or no?
That's up to you, you're the delegate. Yes, I'm on.
Give her a break.
Okay, well, I, I'm just asking because part of this is to make this happen by spring, they got to get out there literally tomorrow.
Well, I think the board pretty much wants to move forward, but now the problem is where's the money going to come from? And I guess you're going to have to decide how you want to take care of that.
Tax fund.
Yeah, well, we can't keep, keep doing that.
Yeah, so, but I mean, I would expect around 180 hour, $108,000 deficit on the backside after three.
And I realize it's, it's not a big rush because some of this money is going to be spent over the three-year period. So there is capital to work with in the meantime.
I wouldn't expect this to run out until middle, beginning of year three.
So you have time to accomplish that.
Are you saying that that's what we're going to assess it over or that is when it's going to take them that long to do it?
No, it's going to, that's when the fund balance in the SAD will probably be at zero and start going to a negative on the beginning of the third year. This, this needs to be done ASAP if, if there's going to be anything happening from spring.
Before we even go to court, I think we need to have this done so we know what, what we're going to ask for. We can't. When it's going to flood a six inches, we can ask for three or two or whatever, better the amount is.
Correct, yeah, and that's why you're giving different rain events, but you'll be giving it all, you know, broke down and you can decide how you guys want to hold it. At least you'll have all the information to make that decision.
And then, and then we'll have to go to Eagle with the designs.
Yeah, after that, yeah, but Eagle will be, there will be communication with Eagle throughout the whole process. I don't, I don't see, Eagle's not going to be blind, you don't blind side them with something like this. You just touch base along the whole time, so, because they're going to have, they're going to have little nuances and certain things they want to see.
Thank you.
Want me to step here for St. Helens?
Yep, Lake St. Helens.
Well, I talked to Luke yesterday, they're going to, they're scheduling borings out there before it snow hits the ground to do the borings for the geotech for that structure, the start design, and that's about it on St. Helens.
On St. Helens, do we have to present it to the judge to eliminate the winter level to do?
Yes, we have to do that, but that's going to be, I believe that is, I believe there was a cost included in the proposal from Spicer, Group and Fagie to account for that.
And they're going to take care of that?
They're going to take care of that, that's because they got to know if they're going to allow that before.
Or they can design.
Before they can design, but I was in a meeting with Luke, Stacy and Luke Trumbull and a couple other people from the DNR Eagle and they actually prefer.
The spillway.
Prefer not having winter lake levels.
Cool. So far, it looks like this is going to move forward.
Yeah, so it seems like it will be happening over there, yeah.
Well, that makes a lot of sense on Lake St. Helens, right now we're six inches over winter level anyway.
Well, St. Helens weird because it's a mile, the gauge is a mile downstream at the structure and if you look at the USGS, the gauge, that gauge ran about four inches under legal lake level because you're a mile downstream. So really, St. Helens is probably four inches low.
Okay.
Or sorry, two.
Two inches over winter.
Two inches over winter, yes. Yeah.
Why would they have put it there, Chase?
I didn't do it, so.
The government at work, right?
Yeah, I, so it's, but it's a mile down, it does, it does manage the lake level, but there is definitely a delayed effect when you open this up for it to start working and so on and so forth.
Thank you. Next, we have Higgins Lake. This morning, I gave you guys the information that I received from Bob Frye on behalf of the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy from Prenton Newhoff, it's a professional engineering firm. For the proposal bid, I'm submitting a permit to Eagle. This was kind of the spinoff from what had happened before with the permitting. The proposal came in at $8,000. If the board decides to move forward, it would require the board to have a trust and agency account set up. Basically, what that means is that Prenton Newhoff would work with the Board of Commissioners and then we would also work with the Land Conservancy to work through the processes seeing as they have stated that they would be willing to help share in the cost. Any monies that were to be paid from the Land Conservancy would go into this trust and agency account and that would help offset any of the costs.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Do we have a dollar figure that's going to be the responsibility of the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners?
So that's something that we would have to decide on. What Robert Frye had originally talked about was that out of the 8,000, he would do the 4,000 and split the cost, however, it is open to, for discussion with them. Once they had stated that they were going to be willing back in July, I believe it was, helped split the cost once before with the delegated authority at that time to submit stuff to Eagle that was never actually done. So we could possibly ask for them to help offset a little bit more of the cost because we did actually pay all those costs at that time.
What are the numbers on those? Because are we at the $10,000 limit yet this year?
Yes.
So we're over for what we had to pay?
Yeah, I believe we've thus far this year have spent around $44,000.
Okay.
In Higgins.
That will revert, well, once, all litigation, everything's all over that, is that going to revert to the SAD?
I don't, I don't know that answer, I would assume some of it would except for the $10,000 that, you know, we have stated.
Well, I mean, why wouldn't we know, we would just do it, wouldn't we? I mean, we would do it as a, as a board.
Right. Yeah, we'd have to verify that everything that we've done thus far would be able to be assessed back. There are certain things that you probably can't just assess back.
Okay.
It appears like for this project, it may cost us about $1,000 depending on how it goes with meeting with Bob Frye.
And this is to do the temporary permits, correct?
Right.
The whole scope is spelled.
Not the permanent one, the temporary.
Right, and the whole scope of everything is spelled out in this bid.
I got a question I forgot to ask Chase. Is the information that we're talking about this, is this information going to be posted on our website so people can go out and pull it down? In other words, all the information that Chase just provided, is this going to be, because we're all looking at these numbers, our constituents don't know what this is, I would suggest if it's not already, that it'd be posted on our website so people can download it and take a look at it.
I know the breakdown of costs is on the Roscommon Lake Level page. That breakdown, that 1.275, that originally is, is on there.
Is, is this information on there yet though?
No. Not until the board discusses.
That out there, can, who do we have to instruct to do that? I think everybody on this board would be in favor of that, otherwise we're, we're in a vacuum here. Nobody knows what we're talking about.
I'm not sure who would direct or have, where.
You know, who would be the one that we would direct to do that?
Depends on which website you want it on, do you want it on Shepkey Consulting? Do you want it on the Roscommon Lake Levels or do you want it on the Roscommon County page?
I think it should be on the county site.
County site. Then all somebody has to do is get me PDFs of the documents.
Okay.
I mean, that's nothing.
Which I already have a PDF version, so I can send it to her.
Right now, who do we, who do we send that to and who, who does it? Jody, okay.
Send it to Jody and.
Do we have to do that in the form of a motion, we just ask her now to do that or, okay?
Back to Higgins Lake, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I assume we're looking for consensus to go ahead and move forward with the Land Conservancy proposal?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, does that have to be done on a motion or?
Madam Chair, I'd feel more comfortable if it was done as a motion. It's just a head nod.
Do we have to wait another two weeks to do that or not?
I think we could introduce a motion now.
It falls within good procedures to do it today.
Well, we're not going to agree with you because the information, as Commissioner Ostrick just pointed out, is not available to the public to review prior to your vote. So that doesn't fall within your board rules.
Jody brings up a good point.
Few weeks.
We could possibly do it at our next meeting.
Think we should, I mean, we keep delaying this, delaying this, everything else is getting rushed through and pushed through for the other lakes. I think we need to do the same thing for Higgins.
Yeah, we can talk about it and we can have a motion ready to go for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and then by then, we'll have a better idea of how much the Land Conservancy is willing and how much it would be from the board. Now get back with Bob Frye and let him know that we're going to have a motion in two weeks on it.
That's best to do at that level.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Along with the Higgins Lake issue, I'm going to propose that we ask for bids from engineers to design a new structure on Higgins Lake. I mean, we put it out for bids. We'd have to advertise it and we'd have to have kind of a scope of work advertised. There's been concern issued that perhaps we should set up an advisory committee for that lake to help us in coming up with that scope of work.
I would have to agree with the advisory committee and I think we should do the same protocol that we did for Lake St. Helens and Houghton Lake.
Keeping to standards of what we've done in the past, I agree.
I, I think that's important also with the current litigation against this board and the county with regards to the SAD, if we can get a project defined, that would certainly be something that we could go to the negotiating table and hopefully set up a mediation arrangement. We ran short on the last mediation settlement that we had in regards to the other lawsuit. I think, I think we really need to advise our attorneys that we're working on getting a bids to move forward with a defined project so we can go and start talking about that with the other parties. I think it would go a long way to settling that lawsuit, the SAD lawsuit on Higgins.
All should be aware, this process is going to take some time because we have to advertise for the advisory committee. We have to select the advisory committee and we also have to advertise for an engineering company and so forth. So this is going to take a little time.
Yeah.
But the consensus of the board for the Lake Committee to go ahead and move forward with this, I guess we shall.
I would, I would hope that we would have the same sense of urgency and expediency that with Higgins Lake, since it's been going on since 2010, as we are now with Houghton Lake. Okay, we're, we're on a real push to get everything done with Houghton Lake and I'm, I'm in agreement with it, I'm going to, I'm going to vote in favor of what we're going to do on Houghton Lake. But I think we need to take a different attitude towards Higgins and start having some kind of a sense of urgency there also. So I know we talked about it's taking time, going to take time, going to take time, I think we need to really start concentrating on Higgins at the same time.
Well, if it's a consensus of the board, the Lake Commission would move forward with us. But do be aware of the workload you're putting on us and sometimes it's going to have to take a little time.
Respect, respect you, your time, sounds good to me.
David?
Appreciate you taking that on.
Um, there was one other comment that I wanted to make regarding Hi-Fi. A few people have asked, why was it kept on Higgins Lake and not the other lakes? Basically, the Higgins Lake Foundation paid to have the USGS kept on Higgins Lake and that's why it was kept there.
No, I understand that, no, no, no.
No, I'm not saying you, there was other questions that came in of why certain lakes had it, why other lakes didn't, and I wanted to explain that.
That's why it's so important that we've got four different measurements, measuring sites on Higgins Lake as opposed to one because there's a difference right now between the Hi-Fi measurements and the USGS measurements of about an inch.
And a lot has to do with location of them.
Correct, that's why it's so important to have an average of four locations and I'm, I'm assuming that we're going to average them to average them as a tool to manage the lake. In other words, just like on Houghton Lake, sometimes you got six inches low on one end and six inches higher on the other end of the lake. Well, if you, if the high part is on the, on the dam side, okay, towards where the dam is, you're not going to, if you're six inches lower on, on the other end of the lake, you're not going to open up the, the gates to lower the lake down. So you're going to, you're going to want to average them on the, on, on Houghton Lake as well as Higgins. And Lake St. Helens, of course, only has one.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The object of multiple sites is to look at it and see how managed in the. The object of multiple sites is to look at it and see how managed the lake level is affected in other parts of the lake and helping us plan how we manage the rest.
Yes. Exactly.
Um, unfinished business. We didn't have anything. Um, motions and resolutions. So whenever our clerk is ready.
Move to adopt resolution 2024-11-13. Whereas Holton Lake, located in Denton Lake, Markey and Roscommon Townships, Roscommon County, Michigan, has established normal lake levels by the Roscommon County Circuit Court under Part 307 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, Act 451 of 1994 as amended. And whereas the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners and its delegated authority have jurisdiction for the operation and maintenance of the normal levels of Holton Lake, MCL 324.30702. And whereas the Board of Commissioners received a petition signed by property owners purporting to represent two-thirds of the riparian owners on Holton Lake, requesting revisions to the Holton Lake lake level order. And whereas, based on the property owner petition and on its own motion, the Board of Commissioners finds that updates to the lake level order are necessary to allow Roscommon County maintain and operate the normal levels of Holton Lake. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners anticipates that an engineering review will be required to prepare recommendations or permanent updates to the lake level order. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners anticipates that temporary updates to the lake level order may be necessary to allow Roscommon County maintain and operate the normal levels of Holton Lake while said engineering occurs. And whereas, MCL 324.30722 paragraph four requires annual expenditures of over $10,000 to be approved by the County Board of Commissioners. And whereas, for the reasons stated herein, the Board of Commissioners finds it necessary to, one, file a petition in the Roscommon County Circuit Court to update the Holton Lake lake level order, including temporary updates as needed to allow Roscommon County to maintain and operate the normal levels. And two, approve annual expenditures of over $10,000 for activities to maintain the normal levels of Holton Lake. Now therefore be it resolved, one, normal level, the Board of Commissioners directs its legal counsel to file a petition in the Roscommon County Circuit Court on behalf of Roscommon County to amend the lake level order for Holton Lake as necessary to allow Roscommon County to maintain and operate the normal lake levels, including requesting temporary amendments to the lake level order. CMCL 324.30707, paragraph five, Circuit Court has continuously continuing jurisdiction. Number two, over $10,000 expenditure. The Board of Commissioners approves annual expenditures of over $10,000 for activities to maintain the normal levels of Holton Lake, including the maintenance and repair of lake level infrastructure, MCL 324.30722, paragraph four. This express authorization to spend more than $10,000 annually shall authorize annual expenditures of over $10,000 for all years in which work for the activities authorized herein continues to occur. Number three, cost of activities. All costs associated with the expenditures authorized in this resolution, including retaining all necessary consultants, legal counsel and engineers, shall be reimbursed by a lake level special assessment district to the extent permitted by Part 307. Number four, all resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as the same may be in conflict herewith are hereby rescinded.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I, I'd like to mention some things. I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of this, okay? Because we're going to have a lake level survey done, a flooding survey and all of that other information. But I want to emphasize something. And I touched on it a little bit earlier. Since 2010, hundreds of people have come before this committee complaining about Higgins Lake. And I'm not talking about Higgins Lake wanting to increase the level just to maintain it. We've had nothing but total resistance, so much that we had to take this board to court. I'm hoping that the attitude has changed. We've got a couple of new members. I'm hoping that the attitude has changed with regards to Higgins Lake and we're going to start pushing with as much expediency as we are now with the folks on Holton Lake. Because I'm not talking, I'm not talking about changing the level on Higgins Lake. I'm just talking about maintaining it. And we're going to move forward with great expediency here on Holton Lake, which I'm in favor of. We need to examine it and find out what's going on and make sure we're not flooding people and so forth. So that's the comment I make. I, I, I'm hoping we can do that. Because this has been my district that it's affected, not anybody else's district, except Mr. Russo. He, he's part of, he, he's, he's in Lyons Township. So I, I want to emphasize that point and I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Astrigan.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Public comment. Come on up and state your name.
Craig Cotterman, Holton Lake Old Trail Drive. Looking at these notes, so real quick, is, is a normal lake level? Is that the legal lake level? Is that something you can answer? But you're pushing to have a legal lake level in Holton Lake? Okay. Uh, I believe I heard Chase mention that there's a four inch difference between the, uh, actual lake level and the USGS gauge. Is that what I heard? Being so far downstream. Believe you.
Lake St. Helen, who can't answer?
That was for St. Helen.
Pardon?
That was for Lake St. Helen.
Okay, it wasn't for Holton Lake. I'm sorry. So there isn't a discrepancy between, it's so far downstream. I always thought there was. But you've checked that because you do have two gauges now. We have a gauge in East Bay. It's not online. You know it's not online. We have a gauge in East Bay. Do you know that? And how do I look, how, where do I go to find the results of this gauge?
I'll get it to you.
Okay, it's not on Shepkey's website.
I'll get it to you. I'll get it to you.
Okay. Okay, uh, real quick, uh, we do have a, we do have a floodplain elevation of 1139.6. I don't know if you were planning on redoing that or not. Townships all signed up for. We have a spring average at Holton Lake, 11 inches above legal level. That's the average. If you look at the USGS charts, uh, they got a small line you can bring up to get the averages and it's got a graph and you can look at it. A springtime average of 11 inches. That's because when you bank water in the summer, open the gates all up in the winter, in the spring, you still have 11 inches left in the lake. On the average, 11 inches. I live on Old Trail Drive. Our property used to be Birch Point. Uh, we had birch trees. And our, our land actually sticks out a little further than everyone else on the east side. So we, we're a highly eroded area. We lost our birch trees probably 50 years ago. We had to put a seawall in because the erosion was, uh, so intense. I guess what I'm getting at is this wind-driven tides, Sash effect, six inches, and the East Bay gauge should report some of this. That if, uh, you had the average 11 inches above, which is an average springtime, six inches of wind-driven tides, uh, we're at 17 inches. And, uh, floodplain elevation is 18 inches. My home doesn't qualify under FEMA flood plain regulations. My crawl space needs to be a foot above the 1139.6 and I'm not. My, front of my seawall is probably a, close to 1140. And I'm not in compliance with the floodplain elevations. So when I sell my home, it's worth quite a bit less because anybody buying my home is going to be required by the lender to have flood insurance. Of course, I have two, two places and neither one of those qualify. And I can't stress this enough, I'm probably much better off than many people on Holton Lake are. They have two new homes built just a little ways from me and I can guarantee you their crawl space elevations or basement elevations are anywhere close to 11 40.6. That's what it's supposed to be. Guess I went through everything. Of course, I'm not in favor of using my special assessment money to raise the lake level. I don't believe it was intended in the first place to do that. Walking into the meeting at the judges' chambers, uh, had a sign, uh, we're going to maintain the legal lake level of Holton Lake. And now raising special assessment money to, uh, increase the legal lake level of Holton Lake. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on up, state your name.
Kate Bisbee, Old Trail Drive. I've got concerns. We have a special assessment managed by the Holton Lake Improvement Board. Got almost a million dollars in its kitty. Hasn't got the next year's assessment money deposited yet. And yet, they had to go, you guys had to go ahead and make another special assessment for a million and a half dollars or a quarter or a half or whatever. That's, both of them are for the benefit of Holton Lake. Improvement Board, special assessment is for the benefit of the Holton Lake. Now we got two SADs. You're going to run short on money on the second one. You're going to go to court and put a third SAD on us. And when is this insanity going to stop? When are people going to realize the kitty doesn't have a bottomless entity to it? And you're taxing people right off the property and you're wondering why businesses don't move into the area? Duh. Think about it. What I got to say here, other than the fact you're going to use SAD money to flood our properties? You're going to tax me to flood my property? How insane?
Any other public comment? With no further public comment, this meeting will be adjourned and our next meeting will start at 9:30. Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Work Session, November 13th at 9:30. First, we have the revised 2024 apportionment report. Jamie Hauserman.
So there's an order in which we'll need to go through the two items that I have for you. The first item needs to be the 4029, um, rate request. So is that, can we get to that? Is that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good morning, honorable members of the Board of Commission. As you know, I am Jamie Hauserman, your Equalization Director. In front of you today is the revised 4029, um, tax rate request. This form has been updated since the November 5th, 2024 election and now includes the total 2024 tax rate request for Roscommon County. The document, as you know, is a statement of transparency. It is, it shows that the county of Roscommon, that now is going to include the November 5th election results, intends to levy the millage rate against the total taxable value that's been established by your board for 2024. The very last line on your report includes the voted-in emergency management millage from the November 5th election for .01 mills. That request has been added to your levy request for the treasures to spread that amount on their December 1st tax bills. You have questions for me on that? That's a treasure. I don't do ta, I don't do tax collection. I'm sorry. I don't know the answer to that. I helped to authorize the collection.
So what we will collect that goes on the December 1st bill, that will fund 2025.
Okay.
Beautiful. Have any other questions? So with that, then this form is compiled under the provisions of MCL 211-24E, which is truth in taxation, MCL 21134, which is truth in county equalization and truth in assessing, MCL 211.34D, which is the Hedley Amendment, and MCL 211.37, county apportionment. With that said, I respectfully request that you make the following motion today. Due to the timeliness of this issue, um, I don't believe that there is a transparency issue being the voters just approved this. Um, so if you would approve this motion at your meeting today, November 13th, 2024, a motion to adopt the following, a motion to levy the ad valorem tax rates for the county of Roscommon for the year 2024 on the winter tax rolls, E911, 0.9835, County Road Patrol, 1.4752, Senior Services, .9586, Spongy Moth, .25, Animal Shelter, .3928, Veterans, .1612, Roads, .4832, and now Emergency Management, .1. I'd also ask that you adopt the following resolution, authorize Darlene Censor, your chairperson, and Michelle Stevenson, your county clerk, to sign the document, the revised L4029, including the November 5th election results. And also authorize those levies that we just discussed, including the summer levy of 3.4613. That's all I have for you for the 4029. Do you want me to then do apportionment? Is that on your?
Yeah.
Thanks, you're very good.
You're welcome. Um, so in front of you today is also, due to the revision of the 4029, is now the revised 4402 statement showing taxable values and mills apportioned by your board for the year 2024. There are some legalese that we will need to go through. Um, MCL 211.37 orders in part that at this session, the County Board of Commissioners shall direct your Equalization Director to ascertain and determine the amounts of money to be raised for county purposes and shall apportion that amount and also the amount of state tax and indebtedness for the county among the states for the several townships. We shall also examine all certificates, statements, papers and records that have been submitted to the county clerk and the Equalization Director, showing that the monies to be raised in the several townships are for school, highway, drain, township and other purposes. The County Board of Commission shall direct the monies proposed to be raised for these legally authorized purposes to be spread upon the tax rolls of the proper townships. At this time, I can certify that the certificates, papers, statements and records submitted by the various townships villages and taxing authorities were examined and that the L4402 represents a compilation of those documents. Further, MCL 21134D holds that the County Board of Commission shall not authorize the levy of a tax unless the governing body of that taxing jurisdiction has certified those rates have been reduced, if necessary, in compliance with Section 31, Article 9 of our State Constitution, 1963. At this time, I can confirm that the certified rates have been adjusted by Hedley, MCL 211.34D, MCL 211.34E, Truth in Assessing, MCL 211.34, subset one, and are also in compliance with Section 31, Article 9 of our State Constitution of 1963, also in compliance with MCL 211.37. Know that MCL 211.37 also states in part that this board may refer any or all certificates, statements, papers and records. to your prosecuting attorney, who shall immediately investigate and without delay provide your board a written opinion. M C L two oh seven point one two mandates that your Director of Equalization shall report on the State Tax Commission Form forty four oh two, the amounts of ad valorem taxes to be raised in municipalities within our county or state, county, municipal, townships, school, and other purposes. It also includes the aggregate taxable value of the properties of each of the municipalities within our county. These certified rates are subject to M C L two eleven point three six, which allows additional millage rates to be voted on up to and including December third of twenty twenty four. And, and if adopted up to including the November fifth election, which is why we're doing the revision. I have certified with your county clerk, Michelle Stevenson, that there are no proposals on a December ballot initiative. Therefore, this will be the last time you'll need to revise this report for this year. Do you have any questions for me?
Through the report, and some of the stuff is in red.
The items in red are the changes based on the last time you saw it versus this time. To help you pinpoint that that zero point one millage was applied to this report, also applied to this report were two millages from townships that were approved by the voters in November.
Okay. And, and I was looking at the Kirtland Community College. I don't quite understand that. Are, are we obtaining tax dollars from them now or not?
We, we are part of the eighth county Kirtland Community College District.
Right.
And so we've collected for them for a very, very long period. And we would maintain ourselves in that district until our voters decided we did not want to be. So it could absolutely be a vote of our voters to no longer be in that district. There's no requirement for counties to be in community college districts. Any other questions? So then at this time, I respectfully request that the following motion be adopted against the day in light of timeliness. Motion to approve the revised L forty four oh two statement showing taxable values and mills apportioned by the County Board of Commissioners for the year twenty twenty four and authorize Jamie Hauserman, your Equalization Director, to sign your L forty four oh two. Therefore, authorizing and directing the various assessing officers to spread the tax rates against the taxable value for twenty twenty four. Thank you.
Are we doing that motion at this next meeting?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Next up, we have the Ross Common County Airport Project.
Morning.
Good morning.
I have a PowerPoint presentation, okay? Is it all right if I stand? Is that okay? Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
We're going to try to keep this brief here. Then I'll have one ask. After we get through it. We're going to talk about a couple of things here today. Airport mission and the airport benefits to the community. Airport Improvement Program or the A C I P, as it's called, Airport Capital Improvement Program. We're going to also talk about a pass project. The I P and the A C I P, an additional hangar project that I would like to bring to your attention here. And then the twenty twenty five budget, if we get to that. I know I'm probably going to meet with the full board likely on November twentieth. Plus the airport budget. Next slide. Airport mission, Ross Common County Blodge Airport Royal Airport's mission is to maximize the value provided to pilots, passengers, students, businesses, and the people of the community through the use of the infrastructure and facilities at the airport. Value provided to the community. Let's kind of focus on it. And so we have business aviation. We have recreational aviation, military aviation, specifically from Grailing Army Airfield. They use the airport for training with their Black Hawk helicopters. They're shoot up helicopters. Yeah, can't really see it. Can you open up the? It can enlarge it, okay? Emergency medical. People use it. You see the? Agriculture for the Spongey Moth program we have in the county. Al's aerial spraying, they utilize the airport for the Spongey Moth treatments. Firefighting, things like that. And one more is the youth program that we have through the local A A H N fifteen eighty. The Young Eagles Program. It's a program where we donate our time and resources to introduce young people from the age of nine to seventeen. They get a, an airplane ride, they get a pilot's log book. And it's in an effort to introduce them to aviation. The great program, it's been around a long time. But we do that three months out of the year, one Saturday out of the month. Usually we'll have fifteen to twenty kids that will come and we will introduce them to. Next slide. Okay. On October twenty fourth, I got the new economic benefits analysis. You all have it in your packet. That I gave you. Next slide. What I want you to focus on here is in order to do this, I had to fill out forms for Kelly Badra at M dot aeronautics. I fill out the forms, I submit the forms to Kelly. She inputs the information into the computer model and this is what it comes up with. Okay? There's a lot of information here. I'm not going to dig into the weeds because I'm going to have Kelly come here and have her explain the, the report. Hopefully in January, okay? But there's thirty one jobs associated with this airport. And the bigger number is that the benefit to the county is a little over three million dollars a year economic impact. I wish that money showed up in my airport budget. It does not. But the money is moving. Money is moving in the county, okay? Well, so, so the airport, and I'm not saying this because I'm the airport manager, but the airport is a huge money generator in this county. It's just, we don't see the money, but it is moving. Okay, next slide. Stay tuned for that. I'm going to get Kelly here. She will explain that entire report for us. The Airport Improvement Program provides grants to public agencies for the planning and development of public use airports that are included in the National Plan of Integrated Airport System. We are on the plan. There are about two hundred and forty public use airports in the state of Michigan. About ninety are on the plan. We are one of ninety. Okay, so you're, it happened long before my tenure here. And we have not, we, we entered into a relationship with the F A A to receive federal grant money. That's really, let's see what it means and I'll get into more of it. Next slide. That's right. We don't, and, and I'll get to that point too. So the funding source on the N P S National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems come from the F A A. Comes from M dot, state of Michigan, and from the local authority, in this case Ross Common County. Something new, all, all the airports that are on the N P S. Eighteen set up, ninety airports on there. And next one. So here's how the money is basically spread out and, and funded. When we do a federal project on the airport. The F A A pays ninety percent of the project, the state pays five percent. And the local or the airport sponsor pays five percent. Okay, so the sponsor of the airport is leveraging ninety five percent of federal and state money at a five percent match. Pretty good deal. If, if you can afford it, right? That's the bottom line. But now it hasn't always been ninety five five. Sometimes it's ninety five, two and a half, two and a half. Okay? The F A A is constantly changing their, their rules and their, the, the way they do business. And currently, this is the, the setup that, that is in place. Next one. Okay, so if we can just use one example, if we did a million dollar project, okay, that's the total cost of the project. F A A pays nine hundred thousand. E pays fifty thousand. And the, the sponsor or the local part of it is fifty thousand. Leveraging ninety five percent of federal and state money at a five percent match. Pretty good deal. Okay, next. I'm not going to get into that. Okay, now, when you're, when you're on the National Plan of Integrated Airport System, the N P S. We are to abide by the F A A grant assurances, okay? This is in place to make sure that the F A A is going to hold the airport sponsor accountable. Okay, we got to play by the rules. Okay? And so the grant assurances get updated occasionally and I have to approve and, and send those back saying, yes, we are in compliance. Right? And next. And really, the, the, the big the big kahuna in the room here is, and we've had this discussion. When we do a federal project, one of the grant assurances is, is, and we are to maintain the airport as an airport for the next twenty years. They want to ensure that they're, if they're investing that kind of money, they want to ensure that we're going to maintain it as a airport for twenty years. That's their rule. Because we want to leverage all that money. Got to kind of play by the rules. Next. All right. This is once a year, I go to our annual, it's called MAP Meeting, Master Airport Plan Meeting. The airport does have a ten year plan. Constantly being revised and updated. And, and what you need to understand is that it is only a plan. Does not mean that any of these things will happen. But it is my job as the airport manager to make sure our, our capital improvements are taking place. That's my job. All right, next slide. So if you look at, if you look at this, if you can see it. And this, and this is kind of really the, the main reason that I'm here, okay? We have fiscal year twenty twenty two bill money. Bilateral infrastructure law. From the U S government. Bill money. That we have available, but we have to, it's a hundred and fifty nine thousand. It needs to get used or we lose it. And, and it has to be set in place by March first of twenty twenty five. The bill money can be used for revenue generating projects. Revenue generating projects, okay? On a standard federal project. Like, let's say we're going to redo our runway lighting, okay? The F A A is in support of a project like that. They, they necessarily do not want to support a revenue generating project. It's kind of counterintuitive. They want a successful airport, but they would rather not, the F A A would rather not support a revenue generating project. It's, I don't understand it. It's the F A, okay? However, this, this is a different, this bill money is a different set of money. And we can use it for revenue generating projects. This is what we need for our airport. We need more revenues. So concept is to build a four unit T hangar. And then have space available for individually built privately built box hangars. Okay, someone wants to build a box hangar, they can come and pay for that. We will lease the land to them, a footprint. Revenue generated. Right now, I have a waiting list of about a dozen people waiting for a, a hangar. Okay, it's a problem. So if you look at the, the red circle there, okay, let, let me back up. When we do a federal project, even using the bill money. The design is a project. The construction is a project. Two, they used to be tied together years ago, the F A A said, no, you're going to separate those out, which I think is a good idea. And so now, if you look at there, okay? Taxi lane design. Taxi lane construction. Okay, two separate projects. We're going to focus on the taxi lane design, fifteen thousand. That's what our airport engineers, that's their fee to design the taxi lane. And we're going to get to what it looks like here in a minute. Okay? In order to tie up the fiscal year twenty twenty two bill money. County has to front that fifteen thousand. Expecting a reimbursement later next year. And you're going to see the timeline, I'm going to show you the timeline here, okay, when, when it comes up. Our share of the fifteen thousand, the five percent, right, is seven hundred and fifty dollars right here. That could drop to two and a half percent or three, three hundred and seventy five dollars. If we can tie this thing up. But not, it wouldn't be the five percent match, it would be a two and a half percent match with the bill money. Understand? But we're going to plan for the five percent. So we would get reimbursed everything but seven hundred and fifty dollars. For that fifteen thousand dollar upfront money. You probably wouldn't see that until next reimbursement, until next October. Now let's keep looking. The next project is the construction of the taxi. This is even before the hangars are built, you have to build a taxi street and, and, and everything that involves that. The construction is a hundred and sixty thousand. That's to put the sub base down, it's to put the asphalt down and approaches. Okay? All the underground work, if there's any to be done. What's the county's share? Zero. Now, I thought it was going to be five percent. Or eight thousand, right? When I went back into our When I went back into our. Arrow's called Arrow PM, that's where, after the MAP meeting that I had with MDOT. I submitted these projects, these concepts in draft form, and then Betsy at Aeronautics, she goes in there and she. When I went in there yesterday, the county share for the construction is zero. I'm gonna verify that. But there is no county match for the construction. What am I saying? For the taxi lane construction. And the taxi lane design, we're on the hook for seven hundred and fifty dollars. Or as little as three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Questions with that? I'm gonna touch on one more thing here.
Yes, sir. Zero on the spreadsheet?
I went in there, when, when, at the MAP meeting, we went through all these projects.
Where did the grant come from?
That would have been our county share.
Right, right.
Built into the, built into the.
Why, that's a question I have, how'd it go away?
They had to give with Betsy on that. He's moving stuff around and, and, now. Okay, I'm gonna talk about one other project here, if you look at the, the actual construction of the four-unit T hangar. Four-unit T hangar. Six hundred and five thousand. We're using five hundred and seventy-four thousand of bill money, because it's a revenue generating project. What's the county share? Zero. Normally it would be five percent. And that's, that's in 2026. If we all agree that this is what we want. But I'm gonna verify these things. One more thing. Look at all of 2025. Right? That is the construction for the runway lighting rehabilitation, I'm taking a lot of time here, I'm sorry. It's the construction piece of the runway lighting rehabilitation. Now, you all had approved the forty thousand for the design, different project, remember you did that last year? Well, our share of that was two thousand dollars. This case, and it, it's gonna show up on another slide here, but look at this. The portionment. From the state, really coming from the vets, is two hundred and forty-two dollars, two hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. Now. FAA. Michigan is a block grant state, and the FAA gives the state of Michigan a whole bunch of money for the block grant. And they give us another little, not us, but the state of Michigan, another pot of money, all discretionary, that's what that is. Every airport is fighting for discretionary money to help offset that, at the cost of the project. I have a very good working relationship with MDOT. We have a mutual respect and we, we understand each other mostly. So, I fight for discretionary money at every chance that I get. Everyone else is fighting for the same pot of money, okay? I've been doing this seventeen years. And, and I've known a lot of the people at that office for that long. And it's a very good relationship that we have, and I leverage that relationship to help us. So that is offsetting some things. Now. Okay, so. Let's, let's go back to the fifteen thousand. The fifteen thousand, this is the very first step right here of a federal project that we do on the airport. It's, it's an agreement between the county and our engineering firm. Their fee is fifteen thousand, this is the very first step in the process, okay? It's, it's just an agreement, normally that this, we would, we would be on the hook for five percent, which we are, but they want us to upfront the money to secure the bill money, the hundred and fifty-nine thousand of fiscal year 2022 bill money. If it's not in place by March first, we will lose that hundred and fifty-nine thousand and we'll go to some other airport. What I'm asking here, and we're gonna get more into this in a minute, I'm gonna try to keep this brief, is. I would need your approval to sign this agreement with our engineering firm. We wouldn't be getting billed for the, it would come in increments, five thousand dollar increments. You know, from, from our engineering firm until we, you know, until we, and then we would get reimbursed everything but our five percent. Second step here. To the project, this, this just gets the ball rolling. Then, then the project would be approved by the Michigan Aeronautics Commission. Let's just, we're talking about the design. Once they approve the project and, and the money is transferred into the system, okay? And a sponsor contract is written up, the sponsor contract is a contract between us, the county and the state of Michigan. You all did that. You need the resolution. For Chairman Censor to sign the sponsor contract. It's, it's the money piece. So we need, we'd need the resolution and we need the motion of you all accepting the sponsor contract. It is standard, every federal project we have done, this is how it works. Nothing is changed in, in the, in the process. Sometimes the, the way the funding changes, but. Okay, so let's move on. Next. Okay, so we talked about the sponsor, Cheryl Kate, this is the last federal project we did, it was a terminal apron rehabilitation. You look at the total cost here, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, okay? Because of the COVID thing. Our county share was six thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars, okay? Which is about, I think it's about two percent, okay? But the COVID money that was out there was, was to help us with our sponsor's share. Now. Money's kinda gone away, right? COVID money, it's, it's pretty much done. But you see where, in, in this case, it was a great project for us, this is gonna last thirty years, this ramp. Twenty-five to thirty years, you know? At a six thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollar investment. Plus the design, of course, different project. All right, so. The funding changes, I don't fully understand it all the time, but I, I get clarification. Okay, so this is the last project we did. Just as an example. And next. And we use this, this COVID money that flowed in through the FAA to do that. Okay, so the runway construction project, supposed to happen in 25 next year. Part of my report budget, it's included in there. Runway lighting, all, all of lighting on the runway edge, in the ends, in the runway and identifier lights gets changed, all LED. Curve energy, good, good stuff. See here, the windsock down there, that's LED, it's gonna get changed, guidance signs, LED, and. Airport beacon. LED. A whole new rotating head on top there, that's a four-foot and diameter, the fresco lens on it. Not at night. Okay, so that, that's, that's what's happening next year, if you all decide you wanna do it. Next. Okay, so here's the runway lighting project, the money. Engineering at the top, we've already done, approved it. There was an engineering agreement. There was a sponsor contract. All paid two thousand for the forty thousand dollar fee, five percent. Leveraging ninety-five percent of federal and state money. The construction cost, this is where we're on the hook. Five percent of five hundred and eighty-one thousand is twenty-nine thousand, fifty dollars, it's probably gonna be less. That's just an estimate. So. What I'm asking for, mostly right now, is the fifteen thousand dollars to sign this agreement with China New Off. Getting reimbursed. Ninety-five percent. Everything happened right away, it's very slow. Next year, and this is in my budget, at twenty-nine thousand, fifty dollars, if you all decide you wanna do the runway lighting reconstruction. It is our county share, twenty-nine thousand, fifty dollars. Leveraging ninety-five percent of state and federal money. Next. Get to update our base aircraft in the report. I go in there probably three or four times a year and I update that, that base aircraft. And you said it, Mr. Ostergen, you wanna make sure we're still on the NIPPIUS. But in order to be on the NIPPIUS and stay on the NIPPIUS and get our, you get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year of non-primary entitlement money, the airport, every airport on the NIPPIUS gets a hundred and fifty thousand a year in non-primary entitlement money that can be rolled over, and it can only be used to pay for capital improvements, can't be used to pay air salary or the light bill or the gas bill. Lots of checks and balances happening here, lots. Okay? Right now, you can see in 2024, it's been updated, but we, you, you have to have a minimum of six planes based on your airport in order to get your, your entitlement money. This is a priority for me. We have four hangers. I will keep them full, we need more hangers. That's the taxi lane right there. And the taxi. And next. Here's the project, the taxi lane. Oh, it doesn't look, you can't really make any sense out of it. This is our one set of T hangars here, another set of T hangars here. We wanna build a new four-unit T here, but we have to build the taxi lane first. This is a future, um, six-unit T hangar, so ultimately, if I, if I had my weight, we would have a ten-unit T hangar and two box hangars, privately built box hangars, we would lease the land underneath the box hangar to the owner of the hangar, they would pay for the construction of that. That's a discussion for another time. I have people interested that wanna do that. But we need the taxi lane first. The bill money, again, can be used for revenue generating projects, the bill money's gonna go away, I think we have two more years of it left. Eventually, it's gonna go away.
Is this turn on the end? Are gonna be a?
No, those are gonna be rented hangers.
We're gonna build them at our cost.
Yes.
Why aren't we giving them?
It, it's the same concept with our current hangers where we, we rent those out.
I understand, bro. Why, why, why don't we do?
You mean disregard the T hangers, is that what you're saying?
No, 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 you got a lot of people that want the T hangers.
We wanna own those. We wanna own the T hangers because it's revenue generating for the airport.
Well, I understand, but still, but it's also.
And a lot more money than the land lease.
Well, I understand, but you have to make the investments to lease out beforehand, how come to it, but you gotta build it first.
You're gonna see.
Oh, it says, yeah.
Say what you, okay. All right, next. But that, that, that's the first, that's what he asked, this is, I think, what you're speaking to here, Mr. Ostergen. This is the, the return on investment. At a forty thousand dollar overall output. So, if you do the rent at one-seventy and two-hundred and two-hundred and twenty-five, over a thirty-year period, this is what your return on investment is.
Seven, seven-three percent.
Well, I, I can get those numbers for you.
I can understand we're leveraging.
I can get those numbers for you, I have spreadsheets. Ready?
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is. What you're saying is, you wanna build them.
And the county owns those.
And we own them for only five percent. But we get the entire lease of them, or somebody pays for it, that makes sense, it makes sense to me the other way.
Well, are you talking about the privately built box hangers?
No, the box hangers that we're gonna pay for.
No. We don't, we don't build them, we don't pay for the box hangers, they're privately owned and privately built.
Yeah, but that is one we were just talking about.
We're talking about the T hangers.
Talking about the one on the end.
Yes.
And you're saying that we're gonna build this accounting, not the privately built one. That's what I'm talking about, but what you're saying is, we only have to pay five percent for the ones that are coming.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was trying to get at.
Yes, okay.
It's a project, it's a federal project, using bill money. But we get to charge a substantial price for it and we decide, so we're leveraging, basically, leveraging.
I understand. We're, we're, we're building it for forty thousand.
Okay.
But yeah, I, I mean, a pleasure to ask, because if you have questions, you guys need to ask me, please. We're covering a lot of ground here, yes? It's an investment for the future, for revenue, that's what that is. And eventually, if we put out another six.
Wouldn't make sense if we had to pay a hundred percent. It would be five percent.
Yes.
If that's the case.
Yeah. Okay, next one, please. We're almost done. Here, here is the timeline. Before, and, and we're, we're really focusing on the taxi lane design. Are you guys getting bored? Looks like you're falling asleep on me. The taxi lane design and the taxi lane construction, okay? So if we look here, fifteen thousand, with the fifteen thousand we talked about, coming due end, end of summer. Taxi lane bed lighting is, they wanna do it soon, get the bids out for the taxi lane. Reimbursement coming October of 25, that's the ninety-five percent of the fifteen thousand reimbursement. Taxi lane construction, we're on the hook for the seven thousand, two hundred and fifty. That would happen later next year. Just the taxi lane, not, not the hangers.
Yeah.
And then, the T hangar design, the bed lighting and the construction happens, you know, the design would happen later next year, but the construction would happen later in 2026. If you all decide you wanna do it. Next. So that, that's a timeline. And this is the budget that I'm going to talk to you, I don't want to get into this right now. We're going to have a meeting with, with the full board right on the 11/20 next, next Wednesday. Jody?
Yes.
Okay, I'll give you a time. Tell it to you about the 2025. Well, again, the final ask. The bill money is a big deal. That's all I can say about it, because it can be used for revenue generating projects. Again, FAA would rather not support a revenue generating project. Counterintuitive to what, to. They want us to have a successful airport, but they don't want to support revenue generating. Reasons for that, okay? But the ask here. Is to approve. The engineering contract with Prina Newhoff. Upfronting the 15,000. They will invoice us as they work through the design. But there would be a sponsor contract coming. From MDOT. Where we will need the resolution and motion for Newhoff to approve the sponsor contract. Just for the design right now. Any questions?
Yeah. Those in the. The numbers aren't matching up. 1750 is 0% lower.
Okay. Yeah, that. The purpose of that was really for the timeline. I, I will talk to you about that.
It just looks like a mistake was made up.
Probably was. But this, this is real. Yeah, this is the stretch, yeah, I, we, we updated this. The, when I went into Arrow for the other, look at our project, you see the zero there that I put it all. But I, I, I'm here. They. Likely they are, but I will, I will confirm that.
Okay.
Trust me.
Because they show that they aren't zero here as well.
I didn't update that. Sorry to put you on the spot. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Um. On the lighting design.
Yes.
You said it would. Take almost a year to get back to 95%. In other words, the county got to put that money up. A year later, we would get reimbursed.
Are you talking about the taxi lane?
Yes.
You said the lighting.
Well, the lighting, design lighting, the design.
Oh, the taxi lane, not the.
You said the lighting design was 15,000.
It's taxi lane.
Okay. Now, the construction would be 581,000. We have to cough up that money?
No.
And don't get reimbursed for a year?
No. No, just the. This is, the 15,000 that I'm talking about for the taxi lane design. It's, it's a special kind of, it's, it's a weird thing right now, because we want to. If, if we don't utilize and tie up the 2020 fiscal year, 2022, 159,000 of bill money, we will lose it.
So the construction is different than bill money?
We're using bill money for the construction also.
Okay. If we have to front 15,000 for one phase, do we not have to front?
No.
581,000 for the second phase?
No. The only thing we would have to pay for the construction. Is zero, according to the Arrow, you know, to our 10-year plan, is zero.
I'm not saying pay. Somebody has to get paid in the process.
Correct.
Who furnishes that money?
It comes from the FAA.
Until we are reimbursed.
Are you talking about the 15,000?
I'm talking about the 581,000. I understand it gets reimbursed. He, is it a year later we get reimbursed?
No, we, we don't pay. This is. A federal project, we don't.
We couldn't afford to pay that.
No, no, no.
That's what I'm getting at.
The only thing in, in, for the construction of, of the T-hangers. Pay the 581,000. The only thing we are paying is our 5%. That's it. We, we don't have to upfront the, the money. Will flow.
We couldn't do it, we couldn't do it, right?
You, you, you could.
I understand that. That's what I'm getting at.
Right.
That's why I want to clarify.
So if you, can you go back to the AIP? Sorry I'm taking so long. I'm not sorry.
I'm not blaming you.
Keep going. Keep going. One more. One more. One more. Keep going. Right here. Okay. Rex. The, the four-unit T-hanger. It, it's 605 on here, this, this is the real number. According to our 10-year plan that Betsy submitted to FAA. We would be on the hook, and, and you can see here, we're using 574,000 of bill money. And from the. Not fiscal year 2022, but 23 and 24. But our share here. Is zero. That's what it says. By, by the plan that Betsy submitted to the FAA. No. To answer your question, I think you're asking, oh, we got to upfront the 605, no. If, if, if we had to pay anything, it would be 5% of the 605,000. We would be billed for that, who knows when, to be honest with you. That's in 2026, right? Yeah. The construction of the T-hangers. I think that's what you were going to say about. So. No, the, the 15,000 is a one-time thing. And, and it's very unusual for this to happen. And it's only because we want to tie up that 159,000 of bill money. We're going to get reimbursed.
Understand we're going to get reimbursed. Question, why? Who runs the money in the meantime?
I don't think we're reimbursed in the first place, we don't need to get reimbursed. It's, the money is distributed from, from MDOT, okay? The FAA gives the state of Michigan all the money for all the projects. You know, for the Nipius Airport. They get the money. Then they. They, they make payments, you know, to the contractors, to. Fairs. That's, that money, I, it's never, we, it's in my budget. Right? Because it is part of the budget, actually. But the money, we never see it. We never put our hands on it. It make any sense? It, it's distributed throughout.
No, no. A simple question for a simple answer.
You don't have to upfront it.
All right.
It's just this 15,000 is what I'm asking. Next to tie up the bill money. We can.
In other words, what you're saying, Eric, is that we have to show them that we got the money there and it's ready to go to get the, to get the project going. Okay.
So the way it's going to work out, it's Prina Newhoff, as they're going through the design. Work. They won't invoice us. Not to exceed 15,000. Okay? And then we will get reimbursed by October of next year. 95%. So everything, we'll get reimbursed, everything but the 750. Or it could be as low as 375. Would it happen? Probably going to be. We'll get, we're likely going to get reimbursed for everything but 375. And answer your question.
I have a question.
You understand, the, the 15,000 is a one-time kind of weird thing. But you got to look at it as a federal project. Using bill. Anything else?
Do we use like local contractors to build the runway, to do all that kind of stuff?
That's a good question, so when, when something goes out for bid. You know, because we're a Nipius Airport, we got to follow FAA rules, Davis, vacant wages and.
What are the chances our local guys will get it?
Reece Riley has done a ton of work on our airport.
Are they local?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Reece Riley has done a ton of work. But you can, you know, you know how it works, low bid gets it.
Well, farther you have to come, the harder it is to get it low, so that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Okay, Reece Riley has done just an enormous amount of work on her. Through all. And, and I, I would support that too, you know?
Eric, is this a project where a percentage of material has to be American-made?
That's also a great question. I mean, if we were to buy, let's say we were to buy, um, a new. John Deere tractor. And we use, we make a federal project out of that. They're using federal money. FAA says, well, 51% of that tractor has to be built up in the US here. 51%. Now, the products. I'll find out.
Good question.
You know, like the lighting fixtures, right? I think they're all American-made here. You know, the asphalt, of course, you know, comes from Reece Riley's plant. I, I, that's a big question, I will, I will, I'll find that out. Anything else? I've taken a lot of time and I appreciate it. So the sooner we move on it. Better. Because you got to sign page 12. And if you think you need to pass a motion, that's fine. You know, and, and if that's the case, we'd like to get that done at the next board meeting.
That's something we're going to do, darling. At the next board meeting.
We're still in the discussion of everything, but, I mean, I'm not going to say yes, I'm not going to say no. We're discussing it. I mean, he just presented it and.
If you have any questions in between now and then, you know, please reach out, please.
I mean, is there any, is there any reason that we can't do it at the next meeting?
No, there wouldn't be any reason that we wouldn't. Be able to put a motion on there and vote on it.
Okay. I, I would suggest that we do that.
This is the.
I think, yeah. By then, the next meeting, by then he'll present his budget and we'll have more information going on.
More to present, okay, I'm sorry.
No, he's, he's not on for his budget yet.
Oh, he's not for next?
He's not, he's not available today for the budget.
No, I meant next.
The next budget.
Yeah, right. Right. But our other meeting is after that, so, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We removed originally number three, the allocation of tax foreclosure retained interest, so we are now at Commission on Aging Budget Presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For having us. Deb Looney, Ross County Community Commission on Aging Director.
Tracy Baker.
Okay, we are here to present our, our approved budget for our fiscal year October 24 through October 2025. But first, I'd like to let you know, as of the 1st of November, I got my first year in. So it's been a learning experience. It's been very enjoyable. Our people, our seniors, our congregate seniors, everyone seems to be in a much better place. Everybody's kind of happy, so that's a very good thing. So, um. I know our clients are happy with our staff. I'm very happy with our staff. So, um, our seniors tell us all the time about the cooks, their meals are wonderful. Yeah, it sounds like the little things, but it's the little things that keep us all happy. So with that, I would like to invite any of you or all of you and the audience. We have hot meals Monday through Friday from 12 to 1:00. You're welcome, we have our three centers. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy.
Hello there. Do you have a copy of our approved budget?
Mm-hmm. In their newsletter.
Okay. On page one, our program donations are at 134,900. For this next coming year, that makes up about 6% of our income. Moving down, our total NMSK, that's $396,000, makes up about 18% of our income. And then our millage, I have projected at 1.665 million dollars, makes up about 74% of our budget. Any and all donations or rental income makes up 2% of our budget. We do our Google fundraiser, sets some costs for our investors. We also have rental income from Michigan Works and the driving school. Going through our expenses, um, just want to bring awareness to our largest area, which is our total personnel. We're at 1.424,945 million dollars. Makes up 63% of our total expenses for the year that we're anticipating. We do have some expenses put in to help offset the cost of our roof that we needed to put. We did a full replacement on our roof there in Brumville. So a portion of that was paid in last year's budget, and this year, um, it will finish that off. So that is in there as well. Our total kitchen supplies, uh, that covers, uh, for the meals. And our meals on wheels supplies and our raw food, um, total 399,500 dollars of the budget. Makes up about 18% of our budget. Utilities of all of the structures and the administrative building cover about 4%. At 92,186 dollars. And that is. Any question?
Questions on the payment package? Um. Health insurance provided. Is it better than what the regular county employees have?
I don't know the answer to that one. Um, we, we don't have a great participation, um, with our employees in our healthcare program. Um, it is, um, a 50-50 coverage, um, at this point, so they do have to contribute 50% of that premium. Um, and I don't know what the county package, uh, looks like, so I wouldn't be able to give a fair representation of that.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
Appreciate the veterans program the other day. It was the fourth or fifth one I've attended to throughout the years, maybe even more. It was very well attended and very well received. Thank you. You both. The food was magnificent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Midi reappointments and appointments. Michelle Stevenson, registered seats. Is Sean here, is he on? Okay. So Brenda's here. Probably to speak on Sean's behalf.
Yeah.
I received, um, an email this morning that Sean's under the weather, so he's not.
Did I?
Okay. But Sean is up for reappointment to the Economic Development Committee. Um, you know, he's a great asset to the EDC, and so I'm hopeful that the Board of Commissioners will. Consider reappointing Sean Petrie to the EDC.
Thank you.
And then Bill Leeson is seeking reappointment to the Airport Advisory Committee. We're letting Bill talk, not you.
You're done.
Better than I do.
No.
You're a reaper.
This is Bill Leeson, he, he's been serving on our airport committee for some time now. He's a, he's a pilot and, um, former aircraft owner looking to buy another small aircraft. former aircraft owner, looking to buy another small airplane. But he is willing to serve again, another term on that Airport Committee at your approval. Thank you.
What else did I say?
You could say you want the job.
I love the job.
Okay, and then we have Angie Ackley for re, for appointment to nine-one-one Authority Board.
Morning.
Good morning.
I've actually been sitting in a seat in the Authority Board now for several months. I'm familiar with dispatch. I've been an employee of this county for almost twenty-five years. Oh, how important it is to the community, and I'm familiar with the current projects that are underway there. Just like to continue as a position.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Want to talk?
Yes.
I'm sure. I, I know Mr. Petrie and Mr. Leeson personally, and they're excellent candidates.
Okay. E nine-one discretionary pay.
Gosh, how long have you been? Months, maybe? Well, Jessica started as director a few months ago, and she came to us after a very tumultuous summer. Early spring, late spring and summer, where we were down to a total of four and a half, because she was actually still pretty much still in training, and three part-time employees, where we normally should have staff a minimum of ten to service all the appropriate nine-one-one hours with the three part-time employees. During this time, these employees worked. I don't know. I'll let you, okay, you explain.
Okay, so during this time, I had, well, like Jody said, basically the four and a half dispatchers until the fifth one completed her training. These hours that you have are the overtime hours that they worked from May first through September first. So their hours are eighty hours every two weeks, right? That's what they're supposed to work. A lot of these dispatchers were working upwards of a hundred and twenty hours every two weeks. May to September is our highest call volume of the year. So not only were they working above and beyond their eighty hours, it was during the busiest time of the year, where we should have had three dispatchers on it sometimes, and we was only two. So what we did was, we took the overtime hours that each of them worked from May first to September first. We took out the leave hours that they used during that time to get the actual physical hours that they were there working dispatch for those four months. We took those overtime hours, half of their pay, and then that would be the total discretionary pay on the side there. The three on the bottom is our part-time employees. They didn't work the overtime, but they chose to stay. They didn't leave. They worked what they could, but that was the number that we came up for them.
So the general, the general tenure is, it started with Jessica coming to me within her first few weeks and saying, they're extremely burned out, I'm worried we will lose them, I can't believe we didn't lose them. Of course, they get paid overtime during that, but it was really not anybody that wants to work a hundred and twenty hours every two weeks and not see their family. They did it because they wanted to see the center succeed. They wanted to help get us through that rough patch. So she said, is there anything that we can do for them? So this was the idea that we came up with, was a discretionary pay. It's discretionary in and of, this is something that they haven't asked for. It's not a negotiated, it'd be a one-time payment. I kind of gave you that, the FLFA IRS definitions there in front of yourself. I know that Jessica did present this to her board, her Authority Board, and this was approved unanimously, I believe. So the next step is to bring this to the Board of Commissioners for consideration. And we'd ask that you guys put a motion on in two weeks for that.
Are you saying that they worked the extra hours and did not get paid?
Overtime, yeah.
And so this is just something they were approving that was not in the original budget?
That is correct. They have quite a distinct fund balance in nine-one-one. It's, it's well over a million dollars that's not set aside. Honestly, a lot of that is because.
So is this coming out of that?
That would come out of that, yeah. It wouldn't come out of the general fund, the tax payment fund, yeah.
You just have to, in other words, we just have to approve it.
Yes.
Okay, they got paid, so they didn't get.
Discretionary pay is a much nicer way of saying, we really appreciate that you didn't quit and make us have to go to MSP to be dispatched, so.
If at any point in time.
So they'll do it in the future, is what you're saying?
Yes. So hopefully, if it happens again, obviously, we hope it doesn't happen again, but if it does, hopefully, they'll stay.
Rebecca?
It's something similar to that during COVID. Because there was just a few of us that worked.
Yes.
Everybody else was gone and we just. Worked there.
But the people that were gone still got paid though, right? Because of, because of COVID.
We did all the extra work.
That was that COVID money, when they were throwing money left and right, that you only could spend on certain things.
I feel the poor people. This is well deserved for them.
Sure.
They were hard.
Well, I mean, they, they didn't get paid, so that's, that's important thing. We're just rearranging the budget, so.
Who are the three people down at the bottom that are listed?
Maddie was considered a part, well, Maddie and Brandon were both considered part-time employees. And then Eric was actually an employee that worked here years ago that came back to help us when he heard what was going on. And he does work two other jobs outside of dispatch, so for him to come in and help was huge for him.
Did he get paid for that, or is that just the amount that?
It's just an amount that we came up with, because they didn't have overtime hours, they just chose to stay and not leave. So we didn't.
So they didn't get paid the overtime hours, is what you're saying? They did not.
For an overtime, yeah. They worked in addition to what their part-time on-call hours would be to help.
Okay.
Cover the gaps.
But we're just trying to say, hey, this is what you would have got working overtime, that's what we're going to.
This is really just a thank you.
Every, everybody got paid what they should have been paid.
Well, the money's in the nine-eleven budget. I know we got the scads of money, so that's.
Yes, everybody got paid overtime that they earned at the time. This is basically just saying, thank you for not seeing your family the entire summer, is what this is.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. With that, this meeting would be adjourned, and the next meeting will start in fifteen minutes at eleven. Commissioners meeting November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at eleven AM.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Wolfson. Milburn.
Here.
Ostergaard.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Censor. Here. Approval of the agenda.
To move ahead, Chair.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Ostergaard.
Yes.
Wolfson. Censor. Yes. Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda includes meeting minutes from October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, board meeting, October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, lake level control structure meeting, and the Budget and Finance Meeting Committee of the whole, Class As in the amount of six hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars and forty cents. Names and accounts in the amount of eighty-five thousand one eighty-nine ninety-six. We have correspondences, A through U regarding MAC legislation updates, letters to the Board of Commissioner, MSU extension, and the Russ Common County Emergency Management Release, Livingston County Monthly Department Reports, Russ Common County Sheriff's September and October Revenue Report, and Activity Report for October, and the Animal Control and Shelter October two thousand twenty-four stats, and our Controller Report. Do I have a motion? Roll call, please.
Sure.
Yes.
Just like to make a comment in regard to this synopsis that was in the resort, pertaining to the October twenty-third meeting. Ms. Looney was listed as a no-show. It was an omission, I think it was more of an oversight, probably myself, because I represent COA Board. She was absent, but I'd like to at least make a comment that no-show was probably not the correct comment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Roll call. Yes. Wolfson. Milburn.
Yes.
Ostergaard.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Clerk Register of Deeds update.
I don't have a whole lot to say. Been busy working with election stuff. The Board of Canvassers are meeting this afternoon at four o'clock to certify the election, so we can wrap up the paperwork. We had a turnout of sixty, it was about sixty-seven, a little over sixty-seven percent, and, which was slightly under actually twenty-twenty. We had eleven thousand between early voting and absentee ballots that were for turnout, and then the rest was Election Day. Everybody was pretty steady throughout the day. I was here until ordered a four and got home at four, and then back here at eight-thirty for a meeting. And so, yeah, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Public comment. Is there any public comment? Hi. Want to state your name, please?
Good morning. I am Elise Matts. I'm with Circle Power. I've had the opportunity to meet some of you before, and for those I haven't met, hello. It has been a pleasure to be in the county over the past couple of days. I attended a Higgins Township meeting, and it's been a pleasure getting to know a little bit more about Ross Common and some of the services and things you have going on here. We are in the process of developing a solar facility in Higgins Township outside of the village. We're very, very early in that process, but I wanted to come and introduce myself and just maybe talk a little bit about the process of permitting, because I know there's been some comments circulating recently, and maybe a little bit of confusion about how these projects move forward. So I've been around, I've been talking to folks. We have not finished our project design yet. But when we do, we're going to make that public. We're going to put together an application, and Higgins Township is going to be the permitting authority for this project. We'll submit a special use permit to their planning commission. And after a public comment and a public hearing and a vote, they will let us know if we're able to move forward with constructing the project or not. So I wanted to come and introduce myself. The county is a, a, a part of the conversation. They would certainly be a tax beneficiary of the project. But I also wanted to just clarify that Higgins Township is, are the folks who we're going to be talking to a lot, and, and they will ultimately be the ones reviewing our application.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Any visitors? We don't have any unfinished business, no new business, so we're on to motions. Michelle, whenever you are ready.
Motion number one. Move to adopt the following resolution to levy the following ad valorem tax rates for the County of Ross Common for the year two thousand twenty-four. Tax rule E nine-one-one zero point nine eight three five, road patrol one point four seven five two, senior services zero point nine five eight six, spongy moths zero point two five zero zero, animal shelters zero point three nine two eight, veterans zero point one six one two, roads zero point four eight three two, and emergency management zero point one zero zero.
So move. Discussion. Roll call.
Milburn. Ostergaard.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor. Yes.
Number two. Move to adopt the following resolution to authorize Darlene Censor, Chairperson, and Michelle M. Stevenson, County Clerk, to sign the revised L four zero two-nine, including November fifth election results, with the following tax rates for the County of Ross Common for the year two thousand twenty-four. Summer general fund three point four six one three, winter E nine-one-one zero point nine eight three five, road patrol one point four seven five two, senior services zero point nine five eight six, spongy moths zero point two five zero zero, animal shelters zero point three nine two eight, veterans zero point one six one two, roads zero point four eight three two, and emergency management zero point one zero zero zero.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Ostergaard. Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn. Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Number three. Move to adopt the revised L forty-four oh two statement showing taxable evaluations and mills apportioned by the County Board of Commissioners for the year two thousand twenty-four, and authorize Jamie Hauserman, Equalization Director, to sign the L forty-four oh two, thereby authorizing and directing the various assessing officers to spread the rates against the taxable valuation for two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Milburn. Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Ostergaard.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Number four. Move to reappoint Jody Valentino to the Ross Common County Obligate Memorial Airport Advisory Committee for a two-year term beginning one-one, two thousand twenty-five, through twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Ostergaard.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number five. Move to reappoint Mark Eitner to the Ross Common County Obligate Memorial Airport Advisory Committee for a two-year term beginning one-one, two thousand twenty-five, through twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six.
Move.
Discussion. Roll call.
Wolfson. Censor.
Yes.
Ostergaard.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion number six. Move to appoint Tom Pennett to the Ross Common County Transportation Authority Board for a two-year term beginning eleven thirteen, two thousand twenty-four, through nine thirty, two thousand twenty-six.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Ostergaard.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn. Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number seven. Move to reappoint Thomas Shepherd to the Ross Common County Veterans Affairs Committee for a four-year term beginning one-one, two thousand twenty-five, through twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-eight.
Discussion. Roll call.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn. Wolfson.
Yes.
Ostergaard.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number eight. Move to reappoint Don Maras to the Ross Common County Veterans Affairs Committee for a four-year term beginning one-one, two thousand twenty-five, through twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-eight.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Ostergaard.
Yes.
Milburn. Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number nine. Move to accept Drake Commissioner annual report as presented on October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four.
Discussion. Roll call.
Milburn. Censor.
Yes.
Ostergaard.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson. Motion carried.
Okay, committee reports. Commissioner Ostergaard.
I have none.
Commissioner Milburn. Commissioner Russo.
I have none, but I do want to recognize one person. Emergency management and the outstanding job she did on this last election and her hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Um, I had a substance use disorder meeting on November fourth up in Gaylord. We went.
We went over the budget and some of the shortfalls because of the way the state reimburses for different services. Depending upon how that plays out, they may be withdrawing some money from each of the counties up there that are involved. This is where our liquor tax dollars go. And the amount that would be withdrawn from each county would be based on the number of people that they served during that time period. So for Roscommon County, it would be based off of how many people are served, and there will be a certain percentage. Animal Shelter on November 7th. We basically had some updates regarding the HX system that needs to be redone. This will be presented later to the Board of Commissioners in the agenda meeting on November 7th.
For the Materials Management, Ray Lewinsky has accepted to be on that committee for Richfield Township. I need to get a Village Board member signed up for that, but their meeting was different than posted date, so next month I'll attend their meeting and see about getting an elected official from there to be on the committee.
Board comments.
I have some.
Okay.
In our meeting earlier in the Lake Level meeting, I just want to let everybody know on the Holden Lake situation that we're not going to know what kind of recommendations or how high the level's going to be brought, or how low the level's going to be brought until we get the flood study done. We can't be, as Rex has mentioned, we can't be flooding people out. So that's something. And an improved dam will certainly help us manage the levels on Holden Lake a lot better. The dam there is in pretty ill repair. And I also want to mention something about Lisa's comments earlier. This solar project in Higgins is going to bring in a lot of tax revenues. And I think we need to really look at everything really careful before anybody gets a preconceived notion that, hey, those solar collectors are ugly, or anything like that. When you're talking about a million bucks a year or more or less, right around that figure coming into the county and practically increasing the Higgins Lake Township, increasing their tax revenue by a good 50%. I think that's a pretty substantial thing. And I'm glad that we got this project going a couple of years ago, and it's going to take some time. Everybody's going to know everything that there is to know about this solar project before it can move forward. There's going to be public meetings where people can come in and object, or not object, or be in support of, or not in support of. So I just want to, you know, make sure that everybody out there that's watching this meeting or is going to watch it or in our audience, that they know that this could be a very substantial tax revenue project for the County of Roscommon. And I think we really need to keep an open mind on it. Thank you.
Commissioner Milburn.
Keeping with what Eric just said, the public concern is always paramount. Transparency is a key. As we move forward with any project, it's important that we have, the public gives their input, that we respect their input and listen to them intently, because the public may come up with an idea that we hadn't thought about. So as we have special meetings and get-togethers, it's always important that if we do have a kind of meeting that we transparent to the public and let them know what was discussed. If, let's see, a chance gathering, myself and Rex happened to talk in the hallway, we come up with a plan, it's important for us to inform the public what we said, to keep the public aware. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Russo. Commissioner Wolfson. Do we have any public comment? Okay, with no further public comment, this meeting is adjourned. All in favor, say aye. Our next meeting will begin at 11:30.